erect a fence which is four feet high and fifty percent open which the deer can jump through when they see. So if the deer cannot see your food, they cannot jump into your yard to protect your food. So now I need an answer from the council, how I can protect my deer, uh, my food from the deer. I've been reduced to tears over my vegetables that the deer just destroyed.
I don't mean to make fun of you, but I live right off of Cardinal and I live on Parkview. I had the same problem with you years ago. And you are allowed to put up deer fencing. It's fencing that's made, I don't know how or why, but it does keep the deer out. So like, it's like the, oh, yes, it's like the, you need something to light it up, but it does work.
Okay, so I did that and then because we are having issues with the neighbors on the left side of us, Lisa and Casey. And they decided to call, um, I think they called Mr. Mr. Donahue. I hope I pronounced his name right. And we got a citation for putting up D N A T. So, um, I'm not exactly sure now how to protect my food.
So I'll have to look into that and see what happens because I know the ordinance does say deer fencing.
Well, just to, well, what they were proposing is to put fencing on the nature park.
Well, yes.
I have food all over my property, all in the backside. I have it by the house. I have it just all over. I have it on the side when you walk through from the kitchen. I have it all over the space. And no, this is the picture of the deer eating my tomatoes. It doesn't have the picture. I have D N A T. I have teeth holes with the black nurse D N A T around. That's what I have. I'm going to use that to protect my food. So I don't know how else I can protect my food.
I don't think there's any more, but let us look into it. I know the ordinance says deer fencing. Yes, it is. So we believe states, deer fencing. We've had, well, we shouldn't argue here. We should take it into consideration. We will look into it. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. It probably comes to you, Alan. And we have one other resident, uh, Dylan.
Yeah, that's, that's. Well, I'm a senior pastor of the Redeem Church. I was home, I said, Nobert County Church up on, I think it's around the library road. But you have, uh, uh, Rite Aid. Yeah. So I'm, I'm the pastor of the church. And, um, I've had issues with my neighbors since we moved to Cali. We came all the way from California. My wife is doing her PhD program, big, I'm a pastor. You know, uh, we are friendly with everyone come across, but it's just like a neighbor on, on, on our left side. And the lady right opposite us is like, we can't even breathe. Every little thing we do is. Take pictures of our houses, of our, our, take pictures while we're away. You know, which is really, it's kind of, I, I felt, I felt a little bit we're not safe. So I had to put on, uh, the CCTV cameras all over the house just to make sure. You know, yeah, they had to go to the crime spots and take pictures of our, yeah. You know, and I don't know why, what we're doing about it because we don't know all these harassment. I see it as harassment. I'm prepared to be police. I met him, um, I met one of the police officers here to report all these issues. We don't want to make trouble. They are peace-loving people. I'm a pastor.
There were a lot of trees we cut down to please the residents.
Yeah, I mean, when we just got to the property, I don't, I don't want to take too much of your time. There are all kinds of trees and bushes right in front of the house. We had to cut these things just to please our neighbors because they complained to us that if the former owner of the property, you know, let those things, let the trees and all that, it was like a pain to them. So I had to get some people to cut the trees and pay for it. It's just to make peace with them all. So these were the things. So I just said, let me just cover my line. Let me see what you guys can do. Thank you very much.
Well, I think, excuse me. I think we will, I think the director of findings, I think we'll have the code enforcement officer. Talk at your house.
Okay.
And if available, we hope so. Have your phone number or something. Let him look it over, please, because just to say off the top of our heads, yes, there are ordinance about garage property, which can't happen. Um, but for some reason, I know what it's like to be eaten like a man, I love it. And I just had to ask me what they eat like flowers. But the heat from us, the evil comes from, we can't see.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Law, he always has met the property owners. He has talked, um, very hard with the property owners. So this is like something that's just happened. This has been online for a period of time.
Something that's, which is that.
Staff will go up from tomorrow.
Yeah, I would agree with that. So we're, we're, we're working the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all your comments. And now we'll move on to the foreign part of the meeting, the bills and payroll. Please, Mr. Services.
Ministerial Services, Mr. Allen.
That is in order.
Public Works, Mr. Lar.
That, that is in order.
Recreation is, Mr. Clark's not here. Thank you. Library, Mr. Zabrowski. Store Seer Fund, Mr. Lar.
That is in order.
Sanitarist Seer Fund, Mr. Lar.
That also.
Capital Projects Fund, Mr. Powell.
That's in order.
Local Kiskful Recovery Project.
That's in order.
Ask for motion to approve bills and the bill list due June twenty first, twenty twenty three. The general fund totaled two hundred thirty five thousand, three hundred ninety dollars.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Uh, under recreation, it says town of B, our G V social hall. It says breakfast with salmon, two thousand dollars. How are we going to collaborate on that? Is that something we just do six months later?
No, this is for last year's. They, um, this, uh, this hour of the morning, they sent a correct table. So they just sent out a return that might be good this week.
Okay, so is it about this?
This is from twenty twenty two, breakfast with salmon. Thank you. You're welcome. I think I'm in the description. Uh, so just to read it, it's the negative motion to approve the general fund bills total of two hundred forty five thousand, three hundred ninety dollars and twenty three cents. From your store fund, total of three thousand five hundred seventy two, fifty cents. And the sanitary sewer fund, total of two hundred forty two thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. From the capital projects fund, total of twenty two thousand, three hundred ninety four dollars and fifty cents. From the local Kiskful Recovery Fund, total of six thousand, four hundred seventy two dollars and fifty cents.
Boom, seconded.
It's removed and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Also ask for motion to approve, uh, checks to transfer, to ratify, checks and transfers to ratify. The general fund totaled seventy seven thousand, four hundred seventy five dollars and one cent. And from the payable fund, total of fifty four thousand, one hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty eight cents. For a grand total of one hundred thirty one thousand, six hundred seventy four dollars and fifty nine cents.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Also ask for motion to approve payable for the date of June sixteenth, twenty twenty three. The amount of one hundred seventy three thousand, one hundred seventy five dollars and twenty eight cents.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Uh, will we go on to the approval of the minutes?
Just got a, uh, new amendments, uh, I believe to be approved in the third motion for convening this Tuesday, seven.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mayor?
As a matter of fact, I might have is animal control reported committed on number three. Police department received a hundred animal complaints in the month of May. Seventy-three were referred to Southland Control, which represents an eleven point two one percent in system usage. And that's around the high. It's typically in the seventy-five to seventy. So that is high. Um, so the, in May, there were two reported accidents involving wildlife. Eleven animal complaints involving wildlife and four deer removal.
Mayor, can you speak up just to give us some quizzes in the background?
Okay.
Speak up.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, I'll turn this over. In twenty twenty-two, animal control were moved, ninety deer from Whitehall, which represents a ten percent reduction from twenty twenty-one. Uh, where a hundred and eight were removed. Since two thousand and eleven, animal control has removed seven hundred and forty-nine deer from Whitehall. Which makes us number three in deer removal. Mount Lebanon is number one at nine twenty-two and Guthal Park two at eight twenty-two. These are bigger communities. Uh, suburban wildlife harvested twenty-two deer during the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three archery season. And no resident complaints related to the archery program are made to the police department. Suburban, uh, wildlife reported one incident hunters being harassed and discovered one illegal tree stand. That was reported to the game, uh, commission. Moving along, Officer Joseph Persicetti was selected to be a tactical operator with Chekov. Critical incident response team. He'll begin training with the team in July. Uh, one of our, uh, police officers sustained a foot injury while assisting Brett Wood, police department with apprehending a once-in-subject. This occurred on June twelfth. And, uh, his next doctor's appointment is scheduled for July sixth, twenty twenty-three. There's a, uh, update on a road and utility projects along Provo's and Wayman corridors. The Columbia Gas contractor hopes to have Provo's road open sometime during the week of July. First week of July. I want to see everybody's question. First week of July. Uh, Bendoff plans to begin the Wayman Bridge replacement project on July the tenth. Wayman Road will be closed to all vehicles and construction projects between Red Dot Storage and Provo's Road through November twenty twenty-three. You won't be able to come off if you want to get that vote. Uh, police training activities. Uh, Chief Gagorik completed advanced incident command system training at the State Police Northwest Training Facility in Meadville, P A, on June thirteenth and fourteenth. Sergeant Bowman, Investigator Newell, Juvenile Officer Smith, completed a latent fingerprint workshop at the Allegheny County Medical Examiner's Office on June fourth. Uh, moving along, uh, the last meeting, I reported that at this meeting, there would be, uh, presentations of extraordinary deeds award for, uh, the, uh, great things that were done over on Baum and Drive with Whitehall residents. Uh, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to get that set up or happen post-meeting in July. Uh, I mentioned at the last meeting, a, that, uh, residents of Teal Drive were considering a block party. And then I did receive the petition and be granted the block pardon between the last meeting and now. So taking care of that. Uh, I also, uh, contacted the three, uh, public news stations at the U T X Academy, uh, K K A T V and the T A E. Informed them of the four public information officers. Whitehall gave them a, uh, cell phone number in the event that, uh, they can't reach someone. And also communicated, uh, reasons why I was contacting them. And lastly, uh, I've been communicating with residents regarding, I'm sorry that Bob, oh, we see it. Thank you. I'm glad you're here. Please let my, all right. So, um, I want to, I sent this to council, but I'm going to put it into the record. Uh, a resident, Whitehall resident, uh, contacted me with, uh, regarding some ideas for pool pricing when the pool opens. And suggestions are that there should be no charge on the first day of the opening of the Whitehall swimming pool. The thought was that, uh, Whitehall residents could come see the pool and decide whether they want to, uh, you know, get a pool pass or not. Uh, second idea was Whitehall residents who purchased pool passes at other municipal pools in twenty twenty-three, uh, should be given reciprocity at the Whitehall swimming pool. Which is an interesting idea that if I purchased it in Brettwood or Baldwin, um, you know, uh, could I be given credit for when, you know, Whitehall opens its pool. Third idea is if pool passes are sold, the pass should be ten dollars for seniors and proportionate reduction, uh, for other levels of passes. And fourth idea is a new pool pass. There should be daily charge of one dollar for seniors and children and two dollars for adults. And finally, uh, a minimum of thirty minutes should be allowed for lap swimming. It will be one hour time periods of twelve to one and five to, uh, five to six. So, uh, in considerations, the council can hear to those suggestions or, uh, and I think I shared this with you as well. Uh, and then Chuck Bargo, uh, could not, uh, attend the next meeting. But he, uh, also wanted to communicate, uh, he was weighing in on the lap lines. He says, when I attended the noon adult swims at Whitehall Pool, which I would do thirty or so times each summer, most of the lanes contain two lap swimmers who swam the entire thirty minutes. Many of us would continue to, to do so past twelve-thirty as long as the crowd entering then did not preclude it. I believe that the proposed twenty-minute slots are too short for the serious swimmers. Thirty minutes is preferred and it is how high point fit that the park handles lap rotations. If the twenty-minute periods were proposed to accommodate more folks within the proposed lap lane schedule, I would suggest that the times available for lap swimming be extended to accommodate more thirty-minute swim. So that's Chuck Bargo's, uh, suggestions, which leads to Bob Perrin. I, I just want to understand the point. So this is, I think, uh, as I understand the point you were making is there's a difference between lap swimming and adult swim.
Well, you, you, you actually called, he called it adults lap swim. Adults are only allowed in the pool. Lot of people, lot of adults don't swim. You have to far go underwater. Lot of adults, they're elderly, they do a lot of pool exercises in there. And again, that was thirty minutes. If you didn't have to worry about nobody bothering you, get your exercise done, then who cares how many kids.
Okay, so you're suggesting that, and again, I'm, I'm just wanting to clarify, okay? I, I don't get a decision here, but I get, I get the facility.
I'm glad you're bringing it up.
Okay, all right. So I, and I, I just want to understand. So what you're suggesting is there should be an adult swim where only adults go into the Whitehall Pool and no, uh, minors go into the Whitehall Pool.
Which it was here for, for ten years. I've been coming here since then.
So you're, it was, uh, and.
For a half hour only.
Okay, for a half hour and then, uh, children would sit on the side, do other things, other activities.
Children weren't allowed in.
Right, right. But they would not be in the pool. They would be doing, if they were at the pool, they would be doing.
They wouldn't let them in at that time.
Okay, all right.
They wouldn't let them in.
And so you're, you're asking council to allow, uh, um, the pool to be completely devoid of any children for thirty minutes each day.
And others' communities are doing an hour.
Okay, all right, all right. I, I understand. I just wanted to understand because I, you know, I've been.
I appreciate it.
Talking about the lap swimming, which is different, right? Lap swimming is different than the, than the adult swim. And so I wanted to clarify that laps.
With the new lanes, it's different.
Yeah, lanes.
Totally different, right?
Yeah. Allowing people to have certain times for lanes is not the same as what you're suggesting, which is the, the adult swim. That there be one half hour when just, uh, just adults are in the pool.
And what Walt was alluding to too, before, they used to have it every hour for fifteen minutes and sometimes a half hour. But people still did laps in there. So you, you let them have their lane and adults would still be in that section of the pool, you know.
Okay, while the adults swim.
Mm-hmm.
They could still do laps.
Yes, still do laps.
Right, okay. Uh, all right.
Well, I'm just. Okay, all right. I, uh, I want to hear that from the old people. I don't believe you, but, but I want to hear whatever he's talking about. Is he correct? Is he not correct?
Yes, Bob is correct. The only thing, the, from, uh, twelve to twelve-thirty was called adult lap swimming. So adults who didn't want to swim laps could come in and just walk around, which they do. And they, I don't know why they didn't swim laps, but they were allowed to walk around, leave for a while. Because it said lap swimming, so.
All right, well, let me ask, is, is the plan to have a, a half hour adult swim where no, no children are in the pool? Is, is that the plan?
I don't think so.
The plan is.
And what is it?
The plan is to have the, um, lap lane swimming from twelve, from twelve to one as well as five to six. And then there will be an additional lane open at all times for those to do lap swimming or lap the please and the activity pool. But there is no plan currently to have any adult swim where the children will not be allowed to utilize the pool. While adults will be utilizing the pool.
Okay, um, all right. So, so Bob is asking that that be changed, right?
Well, we'll go back to, we had it before. Why are we breaking something you don't have to?
Well, again.
Right. Right.
So I, you know, I, I don't make a decision, but I did, I didn't think that the, the views should be, you know, clarified. So the views are clarified now from the council. All right, uh, I believe that's all I have now. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
The meeting's on the agenda for your calls.
Oh, sorry. All right, uh, I didn't realize it was on my report. So I'd like, it's on the agenda that I'd like this authorization from council to, uh, pay for the registration fee for my office. Some things that the mayor's suggesting.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, now, now, go.
And work hard because I know you're not.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And, uh, I also, uh, would like to ask council to stay after, talk about, uh, person of the leader, uh, community services. So we can have a brief, a few, a session, have a discussion. I would appreciate it. All right, that's all I have.
Oliver Sherman, to our support. Thank you, Madam President. I don't have one more to announce. I'm sure he does.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a couple of, uh, we will actually see you. Uh, this is all listed in my June sixteenth, uh, report to council. Um, under item four of the look park, uh, this is my counsel, the, um, the ads were delivered to her today. Um, so the public bid process will be starting the advertising pool here, uh, next, uh, week on the fourth to ninth. And ultimately, a, a bid opening date could be August, uh, nineteenth, twenty twenty-three.
On the park, I, I've been worried, worried, thinking about this. The bins came in much too high. We had to redefine, for those who weren't here at the last meeting, kind of redefine what we were going to do at the park this time. And we're going out for a, a set of bins that we hope will come back with the money that we have.
With revisions.
With revision, yes. It doesn't mean that the, the bottom half of the steps aren't going to ever be repaired or the baseball field's not going to be. That's our, that'll be the second phase. We're not forgetting about the rest of the park. I just wanted to make that clear because I don't think it was made real clear at the last meeting.
Madam President, just a, a quick update in this section because the rest is all about getting your plan in the middle of the phase. If you plan to make a book on the Google website and Facebook pages, help further explain how the doctor that you are.
And, okay, thank you. The phasing on over. And we're also working on the five-year plan. Probably the next meeting will ask you to keep alert because sometime in September, we're going to ask you to come up and look at different plans for Snyder Park and tell us which one you like, which one you don't like, what you do like. So keep, keep your ears open for a meeting in September. I'm sorry.
A little bit of a dollar. Because we have one point three million set aside to do that part.
To do overlook part.
And then the first bid came in, we built a two million, one point eight million, but the second one was one point eight change. Yeah. So at least I have the million, we have this side. Mr. McGowan, I was going to have a button bit, but you will give a recall between that and the bid. That's the bid. We only have a million and three worth of right hand for the same score money, so that's absolutely part of the increase.
Sorry, I'm a little bit.
Um, under item seven, uh, pollution reduction plan, uh, just to let council know, we did receive contract documents, um, from, uh, C Prompt Incorporated, um, so they can get it from the manager for execution. And we will be scheduling a, uh, pre-destruction meeting in September. Under item four, um, do have a couple of action items under the pool. Um, as you can see, um, a lot of activity occurring on the pool. Um, numerous operations ongoing and occurring simultaneously, um, so we're working on to complete that. Um, good news, if the weather holds out tomorrow with no rain, the liner will be complete in the pool and filling is to start thereafter. So that's a good, that's a promise. Um, obviously, landscape is all yours. Fencing, uh, will be starting, um, a lot of general cleanup and tightening things up. Um, but under, um.
I don't know if you can hear it.
Can you hear this?
I can, I can hear him, but I have an earring.
Can you hear, sir?
Well, that's questionable.
It's questionable for me as well.
My, my, my sight is fine, but my hearing is poor. But could we back tentatively, are we still on, uh, July the sixth to open the pool? Or are we, we on a new date now?
Um, the, the pool, the, the date is moving. It's, and I say it's moving, it's ongoing. Um, right now, the schedule we have, uh, they're showing the, um, liner, the liner that I just spoke of being completed next Tuesday or Wednesday. Whatever day the twenty eighth is. Um, so that, that's actually, it's been moved up. We're going to complete it hopefully tomorrow.
Okay.
With no rain, so it's, it's dynamic.
We have the kids.
Yes, and then once they're finished with the main pool, then we have to go to the waiting pool, the smaller pool and start that line. But they're going to start filling immediately. Um, we still have to go through the, uh, final inspection process with the health department and so on, labor industries. There's a lot of moving parts.
There's still cement work to be done.
There, there is, there's some, uh, there are, there is some sidewalk that was removed, had to be removed and replaced. So, yeah, that's ongoing. There's, there's numerous items still out there, a lot of small items.
Well, if we can, if we can't make the July sixth date, how will we be notified what the new, the new date's going to be?
Yes, to be clear, July sixth is the date for, is the tentative construction completion date, not an opening date. But the council is going to discuss the pool items later this meeting and then there is another meeting on July fifth, uh, where something could be announced. But if you stay tuned to the Borough Facebook page, the Borough website for information, we post things in the Borough lobby. You're always welcome to call or stop in and staff can provide you with, you know, the most current information.
So Nello, um, Construction Company, uh, did submit their, uh, fourteenth pay application. Uh, we reviewed that. This pay application, uh, contains the change order two for the fascia blocking and also change order number three for the additional home fryers. The pay applications in order to, the recommended motion to approve pay application fourteen in the amount of four hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty cents for the Whitehall Pool Improvement Contract One, General Construction Development.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And, uh, also, uh, Merritt Electrical Group Incorporated submitted their thirteenth pay application. Uh, it is in order. Uh, we recommend, uh, the recommended motion is to approve pay application thirteen in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-nine cents for the Whitehall Pool Improvement Contract Two. The electrical instructions to Merritt Electrical Group Incorporated. So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Opposed, motion passes.
Madam President, I thought my guy this evening, if you have any questions, happy to take.
I don't have any questions, thank you, we're answered from the middle. Questions people have as they call as they call. Okay, we'll move on to our managers' report.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the first item in my report in regards to the police electric bargaining, bargaining agreement, uh, the team used to abide how returns on copies of the current CBA. And I ask that council offer as the proper officials to sign the contract.
So.
It's been moved and seconded, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Um, next up in my report is in regards to emergency operations plan. Chief of Work recently needed a biannual review of that plan as required by the Council of Emergency Management Services Code. A resolution adopting the updated plan is now needed. I ask that council place this resolution on public display for two weeks, considering adoption of July fifth.
It's been moved and seconded, this is the emerg- an emergency within the community, it's not safety needs, I'm, uh.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Uh, next I have got to on the solar panel project. Uh, PA Solar Center performed feasibility study, uh, on potential sites for panels within the borough. I think you have a copy of their presentation and the, uh, financials. Uh, while the borough was initially interested in, uh, panels on the salt dome and the ground mound on the both side on Borough Park Drive, uh, PA Solar Center also identified the roofs that would be in emergency building and fire station number one as additional options for consideration. Their studies are included in that packet for your review. The cash flow analysis and financial metrics of each site, um, are also included there, and the net prices for the sites range from an estimated twenty-six thousand dollars to three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, uh, which equates to total savings rating of up to nineteen thousand dollars to one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And those estimates are based on current electricity, uh, rates and usage and the total super values of the SCRE credits being sold back. So I'll continue updating you as that progresses, right now, they're working on a draft draft. Uh, another infrastructure update, uh, in regards to, um, excuse me, wiring for, uh, live streaming and account chambers. Uh, after two walkthroughs, culinary quotes from a little over thirty-two thousand will be seen for wiring the hardware. Uh, this cost is excluding the additional computer, software, and server costs, which are still being investigated and coordinated between the police administration IT and the police department's IT. A final estimate is will be secured once the Comcast fiber is installed, which is slated for August, September, so you can finalize those numbers for the budgeting season, that's our, yeah, it's very shocking.
Let's get, this is gonna be a part of the twenty twenty-four budget.
Correct, I'll gather the numbers for the, uh, the meeting. And I believe this, uh, this was pretty early to earlier, the safety training that staff had initially, uh, coordinated with Officer Smith, um, had been canceled due to death in the stand. So we are rescheduling that for August twenty-first, from eleven AM to one PM. Um, so the entire borough loading will be closed for that time period, while the library, couple of parks, and administrative staff will see back the safety training. Uh, we'll close notices everywhere that the panel on the dance. Uh, also in regards to the library, the upper library lot will be closed for day day tomorrow. We should see a press talk already, there's fifteen spots along the sidewalk, um, will be regated as part of the swimming pool prepared project. And then last but not least, uh, the historical society, Whitehall Historical Society was kind enough to invite me, um, to a field trip to New Jefferson Historical Society, um, storage room, uh, to take a look at how, um, how they store their items, what kind of space they're looking for to display items. They're about twenty years ahead of our historical society, um, but it was nice to see where our historical society hopes to be. So I'm working with them on securing some display space in the lobby, and after their sign auctions completed, I think they're gonna contribute to some display case of, of some sort in the lot. So that's ongoing.
Hey, Courtney, you've got a great, uh, historical, uh, building over that belt mark, uh, somewhere.
Fine, I'll, I'll let them know.
It's, it's an old school building, the Biden's, uh, it's, it's first class. Basically.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Any questions with the manager? Gonna be able to move on to committee reports, but it's.
Thank you. Chief of Charge reports on a motorist acting in the rear of car, police dispatch eight, parking lot, dealer's vehicle, and he's estimated seven hundred dollars in his second response to the repair cost. The work will be completed by the, uh, extension. Uh, unfortunately, that's the chief's brand car. Whole vehicle, released.
Don't need to muffle.
He did call, he, he, that's good.
I, I'll give the motorist credit, he could've got away with it, 'cause I was pulling out of the lot, on my way back, I couldn't understand what was flacking on the windshield when it was just up. Took a jump.
Okay, secondary, uh, the documentary about the two thousand and nineteen, uh, two thousand and nineteen F, the Elizabeth Weisenfeld, which aired on June twenty-eighth, one thirty, ten o'clock, on the investigative discovery show. Our officers are on the city, and we're gonna have the homicide event, it's a big feature, and for the following.
Yeah, Chief, that, that, explain to the public case and, uh, the mayor what, what happened.
In two thousand and nineteen, we had a homicide that occurred in, in the borough, Elizabeth, uh, Park. And it turns out that Andy Van killed the resident, um, produced her body from the area, and discovered her in a landfill in the borough. We immediately started a missing persons case with the family, we left contact with the, with the intestines and the assistance of, uh, the guards. Detective cameras and GPS tracking, we were able to develop suspect, we worked the kind of detective, they were able to get the pest porn, they were able to get the core. It took them at least three to six months before she was located, and she could be properly located. And in these three years for the prosecution came about, he was found guilty, he was currently in jail.
So that's, those circumstances are gonna be on TV.
Yes.
Uh, June twenty. June twenty-eight, discovery, discovery.
Investigation discovery, that all depends on what you're taking. The name of the program is On The Case With Clothes On.
On The Case With Clothes On, so the TV watcher, clothes on, white collar. That's all I have, that's all we see.
Any questions? Thank you. Um, move on to recreation, unfortunately, this book is up here.
Okay, uh, just to answer some of the questions we, uh, we had, uh, yes, there are penalties in the contract, uh, for lap lanes, uh. What we have to do there first, this is a branding pool, branding facilities, we gotta be balanced. So quite frankly, we need to have a little bit of patience as we get a grasp of operating the pool, seeing how it functions, see how the customers function. So let's have a little patience for these people. And we really appreciate if you weren't so brutal to our staff people and accosting them with verbiage that is not their decision, it's council's part. We're trying to do the right thing here, it's a six million dollar project, we're not saying, my gosh, if you put her in, look, that thing is a gem, that's a diamond up there, this borough has. And to harass these people about these, these issues until we find out, these folks haven't even operated that pool yet. So they, they have no idea how things are gonna work and how it's gonna function. We need to get that squared away and a little bit of patience for that. The grasp part, well, we wanted a bigger pool, so we could accommodate a lap pool, children's pool, and children's activities in the bigger pool, that's why there's less harassment. And, uh, I'm sure that they'll come back to us and report back to us what needs to be changed, what needs to be worked on and improved, and what is working good. So, uh, we asked for a little bit of intelligence there, and it's with any contract, if you've ever had contractors at your house, things don't go always this way. Hell, when they dug that pit up and took out the old pool, we found rock underneath there that took extra time and excavation to get out, and of course, caused us some more money. But the, the issue is here, it's all of our pool, it's a gem for this borough, just like the library is. And to harass these people is just unprofessional and, and my, you know, so, we'll move on from that. Okay, we got a couple, uh, pool prices, we can speak to it, so what, what I'm gonna recommend to you is. Could be others coming up. Exactly, I thought it was going to be.
Bob, who are you, Bob, next, five, five?
Sure.
It's not the two that are here, anybody that's here that's harassing, okay, I don't want you to think, I don't want you to feel like you're, you're harassing.
Thank you.
You came to your, your council, uh, in a public meeting, and you expressed your views, and that's your civic right, so Bob is not referring to anybody in this room.
Thank you.
You did this turn me thing right now.
Okay, yeah, I would like to do that now, since it's all right. So what we have is two, two, uh, pool pass applications. And what I'm recommending, because this, uh, we have a relationship with Baldwin Township, this factory, this seven, so that, uh, they did the purchase of the new number of pool passes. So what we were recommending from the committee is that, uh, the pool prices for the Baldwin Township presidents would be at half price since for half a year. That's if we still open the first week of July, but anticipating, hopefully, we're expecting construction, because construction won't be done until July, what, sixth, yeah. So we're making a recommendation that the pool passes, uh, if the dates still hold, that we'll go ahead and charge fifty percent of the normal rates for Baldwin Township. Now, for the Whitehall residents, we were also going to do the fifty percent, but because of the uncertainty on our part and the residents' part, I would make a recommendation that, uh, you still have to apply for passes. That there would be no charge, this is the issue here, we're opening up, because we will have issues of operations and things like that. So we can still do pool passes, but for Whitehall residents, we need no charge for us this year. That's my recommendation of the committee's.
And mine.
Yes, so we can, we can push through a motion to, uh, to do those things. All our discussion, all our promotions.
I just want to point a question, um, so it is a motion on the agenda to adopt a amended pool pass fee structure, is that's the issue?
So is there, uh, was there a proposed fee structure that we were proposing, or is it?
This is it.
Then that's, then we're, then we don't have to amend it?
Okay, so that's my objection.
So I'll make a motion that the pool pass application reseal for Baldwin Township be, uh, published at, at fifty percent rates in the moment. That's the first.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all in, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Okay, pool pass applications for reseal for Whitehall Borough residents, there are prices listed here, but I'm, I'm making my motion that, uh, the residents of Whitehall will still have to go through the process of getting a pool pass, but that pass will be free of charge for this year and this year.
You mean they have to come in, identification, they are Whitehall residents?
Well, that's what happens when you get.
Yeah, I'll just say a little quick.
So that's the motion.
Well, in your motion, are you eliminating guest passes, or can a resident bring in, are we still going to charge basically five dollars a piece for a guest pass?
For guest passes.
We'll have to make anything else.
Yeah. So, uh, so.
All right, so we can comment, so this is a great idea, because one of the things, um, you know, one of the problems is, since the date is moving, you know, what do you charge, right? So by making it no charge, you don't have to worry about when it opens up, and that's why I think it's a great thing for the residents, so, um.
Okay, so we'll make that as, as passes.
Okay, there's a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Uh, we did, we went through that already.
Yeah, you were proposing here just to adopt a amended pool pass fee structure, so that's probably, that's enough to.
You can see, so.
Bob, if I could just have clarification, so, uh, all Whitehall residents are free, but they still have to apply for a pass, correct?
Correct, is that, is that, is that, that shows they're a resident here, since they did that verification through a pass.
Okay, I understand, no problem. So if someone who lives in Whitehall hasn't heard that, like, many people do not, comes up to the pool, but heard it's free, how do we handle that?
In pool passes, the, uh, seat orientation on Saturday, um, allows the residents to check the points, like, so your staff will be able to check, verify their residence.
So even if they don't have a pass?
Correct.
I can still let them in?
Yes, they can.
Because I thought Bob said you had to have a pass.
Well, there's processes there, but there's defeat.
I think what you're referring to is daily admission.
Correct.
So a Whitehall resident could still walk up, show proof of residency, the staff could check it, and they could be letting, you're referring to someone who has purchased a pass?
Correct.
That they don't have to show residency every time that one is.
I understand, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then we'll still, uh, we'll make a motion on the guest passes.
Second.
We have two motions, though, that, um, that we moved on.
No, I, I, correct, may I come wrong? Yeah. Uh, the first motion for Baldwin Township presidents did, did pass. So the current motion, um, that concern the county changes in regards to Whitehall Borough residents, um, having no fee to utilize this swimming pool, they do so happen to provide for the residency. That is excluding guest passes, which will be a fifty, solely fifty percent.
Correct.
Okay.
That's good.
Do the guest passes carry on to the next year, or?
How about old ones?
So we get, we should get a bunch.
No, the kind of guest passes do, so individuals that have guest passes will be.
No, I'm talking about.
No, but just in general, we did not, we need to clarify that.
Yes, that's a good question, Bob, a very good question, because there are a lot of people every year who have those, paid for that, and have not used them.
Yeah.
And we always allow them to.
Oh, okay, they're using, they're using it.
So then is the motion still to sell guest passes at fifty percent?
But let's do just motion, uh, passes, and, uh, make it a separate motion on guest passes.
Especially that to clear.
Just to clarify things.
I think a motion is, we may, um, it's stating that Whitehall residents will be free of charge, and it's still to provide residency.
By a pool pass.
Yes.
Yeah, a pool pass.
Okay, that motion was made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And the actual guest pass.
Yes.
For fifty percent. But that's the reason.
Well.
So, uh.
I would say, is that what you said?
No, he said the ones that were left over from prior years, I mean, not ones that's.
So I think if they're.
Nobody's.
No, I'm gonna stock up. Yeah, I mean, I think guest passes should be like fifty dollars.
Yeah.
I think if you're bringing a guest in, ten dollars. Or five dollars, it's still on the.
It's cheap.
Five, five dollars on Memorial, five dollars on Labor Day.
No need to stock up.
What's the difference, you know, what's the difference?
So let's make.
Guest passes at the memorial. Is that what you're saying?
Rate of ten for fifty dollars.
Right, so.
They don't need any motion to.
Okay.
It's just to clarify.
Yeah, but it was, you kept it, the other.
But that is still a process.
Still have a motion.
So is that a motion?
I'm, I'm.
Would be this good question?
What's there?
Anyone in any universe?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. I think maybe he's ready to get up.
Question, have.
I don't know if it's ever been brought up, have you ever gave a discount to first responders, you're military?
Yes.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I, I've never heard of it.
I've happened to go back and go up and see.
'Cause I, I would've probably used mine, I never, I never heard you have.
Well, the fire department, we've, uh, yes.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, you don't have to do that tonight, I'm just.
We're gonna have a discussion.
Wow, this year, free is free.
Free's free, right.
We're gonna look this up. Bob, Bill, we're gonna look it up, we've got that one for real, ladies.
Just, just curious.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your hand. Um.
I'll see what else.
Um.
Well, done with recreation, I'm gonna move on to the administrative services.
Wait, I'm waiting.
Oh, hang on, okay, I'm sorry. We're on a roll here, so.
I won't talk about the pool anymore. Alrighty, um, so the second concert in the park with Abi Evidanza was held in front of Plaza on June sixty. The rain did hold off, um, there was a great pla- crowd, there was even a little girl from, um, the borough that got to sing with him, and the residents loved it. Uh, the next concert is July seventh, which is Novice, um, they are a fully Whitehall band, um, and then Hot Diggity Dog, River Taco, and Hot Bus Tiki there as well. Um, the Teddy Bear Picnic, that was, um, with the library, was a success, it was held at Frank Park. Um, Public Works painted the lines for another pickleball courts at the basketball court. The court, or the tennis court is already being well-received, and permit applications are already being, uh, accepted as well. Um, summer camp started on Monday and is going very well. Camp counselors have encountered some several outside individuals attempting to utilize the parks, all the campers are on site. A reminder about the closed permit system was posted on the recreation Facebook today, just as a reminder. Um, the seventy-fifth kickball tournament on Saturday, July twenty-third.
The seventy-fifth kickball tournament on Saturday, July twenty-third at Union Park will feature music, food, and drinks, raffles, and a fun big ball game for anybody that wants to participate. We also have a campout in the park, which is July twenty-ninth at Highland Park. Interested residents should register for a movie under the stars. Snacks will be provided at night and a light breakfast in the morning. Then lastly, I've been collaborating with the library on some events for the fall, so those will be announced soon. Any questions?
I'd like, yeah. I'd like, an idea that Stun came up when we were talking. No, I'm talking about the building, not the old swimming pool. It's for pickleball. Well, this is. What's all?
Well, that bug, that. Yeah, you were, you see, I was saying.
A couple, very, very.
Yeah, y'all step into where the baby's.
That's something to support. I see helps. Planning and zoning. Oh, admin, I'm sorry, I tried to slip right over you.
Okay, oh, first of all, sir, Mark's the only recently to do the four-day training course in the dance. Flute playing concepts, developed by Deema, I think. Any feedback for that, any certification?
Not a certification, I think kind of very hopeful, it was a four-day course. Learned a lot, you really enjoyed it.
Okay, the residents at two oh one through two thirty-one, Shadow on Circle, sent a really kind of thank you to Mr. Wilson, you know, Mr. Harris, supervisor, for quick response to the C Theater of Brothers Road app. I understand, it's a nice long thank you letter. Says that, but barely the smell was obnoxious.
Yes, it was during that key week, and at the same time every night, they, they really noticed that he was very lunching. And she called us late in the day, I'd been getting Eric over there, this is Friday, by the way. Got him there before the end of his workday, found the deer immediately, saying she didn't hear the issue.
Is there anything else under?
Yes, I thought that I have to.
Do you want to do planning and zoning today?
Oh, I gotta do this before.
Yes.
Okay, I'm betting that on the fourteenth, and Mr. Lullig is here to keep going through a motion, and we'll get into that.
Yes, that, staff request, council consider a motion to add on two thousand and thirty-three SLD oh four Grove Point Phase Two Third Amendment. The applicant requests approval for subdivision of Lot Twenty-Nine of the Grove Point Phase Two residential land development. Established property lines along party walls and five townhouse units under construction. At last week's meeting, the planning commission recommended additional approval of this application. And that recommendation letter should be in your attached memorandum dated June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Staff recommends council grant approval of the application subject to certain conditions. The applicant shall address all outstanding issues referenced in the Borough Engineer's Review Letter dated June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, in a manner acceptable to the Borough Engineer. Any additional issues raised by the Borough Engineer shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Borough Engineer. And the applicant shall address all outstanding issues referenced in Borough Director of Planning Zoning Code Enforcement Memorandum dated June ninth, twenty-two, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, in a manner acceptable to the Borough Director of Planning. Any additional issues raised by the Planning Director shall be resolved to the satisfaction of the Planning Director. And the applicant shall be to pay all professional review fees of the borough in connection with this application. And that is staff's recommendation for this application.
Through there, Scott?
Yeah.
Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve two thousand and forty-three SLD S O four Grove Point Phase Two Third Amendment subdivision plan application two five two dash two six service, Chelsea Drive, subject to the conditions in planning, contractor planning and zoning, and vote of course in the memorandum dated May eleventh, twenty. Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
That's all I got, Matt.
Move on to library, Stun?
All right, I prepared a thirty-two slide presentation. So, it's first thing to start out, it's, yeah, it's me again, it's my one time a year. I'll be short and sweet, first thing, all of the campaigns, all of the initiatives and programming for the summer are already underway at the library. Obviously, you walk in and you see a bunch of books, but really, then if you took a look at the calendar and how many programs are really offered through the library, you'd be very, very impressed. There's probably more programs than there are books if you take a look at those. All those are mostly full also, whether that's a steam class or meet a police officer, which we've done a number of times. Worked with the fire department, we're, we're very appreciative of that. We also just finished the Friends of the Library Spring Campaign. The goal for this year was thirty-five thousand dollars, we got to May thirty-first. And we were unfortunately at thirty-four thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars, so we missed it by thirty-six dollars. But the next day, we made it, and we are now over forty thousand dollars, we're ahead of goal. We also had an anonymous donor, who is a citizen of Whitehall, who contributed an additional five thousand dollars just for getting that goal, so we're, we're very appreciative of that, so we can continue what we're doing there. Hannah, already mentioned, there's some things in the works for fall, so I'll go ahead and check that off my list that I don't think we talked about, I should update that later. The other big thing that is coming up is Whitehall Reads, it's something that's been going on for quite some time now. It is a community reading project. Whitehall Public Library is a member of ACTLA, which is part of Allegheny County, but obviously, there's a lot of work that's done here as well. So that is gonna be a featured book, there's gonna be a lot of programming around that book. This year, it is remarkably bright creatures. I know that you might be thinking it's named after me, but it's not. So we're looking forward to that, we have the programming that's gonna be starting soon. So there's a lot happening ahead of the library, a lot of good that has happened recently, obviously with Friends. And I am the, the chair on behalf of the library that works directly with the Friends, they're really the ones that do the, do the heavy lifting. So I appreciate that. That's the update from the library.
Hannah, that could be a, be a comedian for your, your February, February event, stand-up comedian.
And then we would really, we would have to, we'd have to open a bigger venue. We already sell out early, now we're gonna sell out really early.
Okay, next on the agenda is Parks, and I can help you cover most of.
Of course.
I'm married. Excuse you, totally forgot.
Thank you, Madam President. Public Works crews have been busy spusing up the Honorable Monument at Baptist Road. New concrete steps, sidewalks, records, to allow your better access to the monument, river rock. And then plans will be added shortly. We have, we have an unusual group. They're all very talented in one thing or another, so they can do, they can build anything, they can paint anything, do anything. Public Works crews are also started work on the encasing of the police department sign in front of the building in stone from the old swimming pool. That's in, you look at the entrance to the Barbadoon here, that beautiful stone monument, that's what, same thing. The stone came from the old swimming pool, and now they're using it, some of them more of it, put a monument across the street. Public Works were renting a fillet machine tractor with a brush arm. You ever see them when they drive down a road? It's a tractor-like machine, and it's got this big arm, except they cut the gold saw down. Well, we have a lot of places that we will never did, and we have to do that now, because there was some bad stuff, like we're denying things. So we're gonna cut it down, and then from then on, our group will be able to handle everywhere there is. The first time it starts on at the tennis court. To maintain round diversity, cut the other, remove poison, and block. It's a big word, improve our own property. We don't need a motion. That's it.
Any questions on Public Works? At Parks, I think, I've said twice now, we've covered it. I'm doing a new business, anybody have any business? I have one thing, I've been talking to Donna about the Shade Tree Commission. And I don't feel that I, it's, when we're talking, I'm giving her my opinion, not all of council's. So I printed out the only information I could find were the borough ordinance where we adopted the Shade Tree Commission. I, I, there's one on everyone's desk, I'd like you to take it home, read it, and see how you, what you think the Shade Tree Commission should be doing, and we'll give Donna a chance, I mean, I'm sure you've seen it. I just, so we're all on the same page about the Shade Tree Commission. And I'd like to have a discussion about it the next week. So if you, that's why that piece of paper's on your desk, if you would please take it home. The Shade Tree Commission did come out of Economic Development South, I don't know if that that doesn't exist anymore, how that changes things, so just something I'm asking you to say. Anybody else have any new business to come up? Okay, go on, your motion for adjourned. But no vote, no. Secondary motion, and a second for adjourned, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes, thank you all for coming.
Mr. Mayor, can we speak to it before we go on?